All right, everyone. Well, I think we will go ahead and get started for this evening. So just want to wish everybody good evening and welcome. My name is Michelle Duval. I am the obligatory council member from the state of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Mid-Atlantic Fishery Management Council, and I'll be serving as the hearing officer for tonight. So the council is requesting public comments on a draft amendment to modify essential fish habitat designations and descriptions for 14 of the council's managed species. And I just want to let everyone here tonight know that we value your input. And so first, I'm going to turn things over to Jessica Coakley of Council Staff, who will present some background information along with a couple of other folks. One from Council Staff and our contractor, Chris Hake. So and after that, you'll be invited to comment or ask questions after the presentation. I think we will pause for clarifying questions after the presentation before moving into the public comment portion. And so I think just a few things to think about when providing comments. First, which of the proposed alternatives do you support? Action or no action and why? Are the proposed maps and text descriptions representative of the areas that would be considered essential fish habitat for the council's fish species? And then finally, are there parts of EFH that are not captured in the draft designations? And if so, please provide specific details. So with that, I am going to turn things over to Jessica to walk us through the process and this draft amendment. Thanks, Jessica.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. I just want to make sure that you can see my slide deck.
Yep, we see it quite clearly. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining. I just want to let you all know that the comment period is open on this action. So you can submit comments anytime between now and February 11. We'll have a number of public hearings during this time period. There's actually five. This is the first of five hearings. But there's also other ways to submit comments, and we'll touch on those a little bit later in the presentation. So the purpose of this action is to consider revisions to the essential fish habitat designations for all of the council managed species. So the scope of the action covers 14 of the council's 15 managed species. The exception is monkfish. Monkfish is jointly managed with the New England Fishery Management Council, and the New England Council has the lead on monkfish. So they actually recently updated the essential fish habitat description for this species. We also jointly manage spiny dogfish with the New England Fishery Management Council, and our council has the lead on spiny dogfish. So that is included in the list of the 14 species that we'll be talking about. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to review the draft amendment. This public hearing draft is being provided for you. And it proposes new essential fish habitat maps and texts, as well as habitat areas of particular concern. It also touches on the fishing effects determinations that the council has made relative to these proposed essential fish habitat designation descriptions. We're here to gather public input, gather your comments. Michelle touched on a number of questions that we'd really like to get your input on. You know, which action do you support? Have we really captured what would be considered essential in the descriptions of both the texts and the maps, which work complementarily together in terms of supporting the essential fish habitat consultation process? So what is EFH? The Magnus and Stevens Act describes it as those waters and substrates necessary to fish responding breeding, feeding, or growth to maturity. So it's a broad designation that's inclusive of all of those different aspects of life history and habitat use. Habitat areas of particular concern are a subset of essential fish habitat that is ecologically important, sensitive to human-induced degradation, stressed by development, or rare. So those are specific criteria that we would use to describe that subset of EFH as habitat areas of concern. These designations, both the descriptions of EFH in text and maps and the habitat areas of particular concern, are used in the essential fish habitat consultation process. And this is a process to protect habitat from adverse effects. So the consultation process works when federal agencies propose a project. They must consult with NOAA Fisheries on any actions that may adversely affect essential fish habitat. So the kinds of projects that we might be talking about are dredging projects, development projects, wind energy projects, any action that involves those federal agencies. And there are also state agencies that, to a degree, get involved in those projects in that process as well. So NOAA Fisheries has to consult with those action agencies. Nationally, there are several thousand projects that are consulted on every year. Within the Northeast region, NOAA Fisheries consults on approximately 300 projects every year. And about 80% of those consultations occur in nearshore areas and state waters. So those waters that are closest to shore. So as we move to the process of improving our essential fish habitat text map and HAPC descriptions, the impact of those designations, it's very important in terms of these nearshore habitats and making sure that we really capture those well, as well as offshore, although there are fewer projects that occur in the offshore area. So the Mid-Atlantic Fishery Management Council has been working on this amendment for quite some time. They conducted an essential fish habitat review that was completed in April 2025. Council staff, both from the New England Council and Mid-Atlantic Council, worked on that for a number of years and pulled together information, data, reviewed the current designations, and looked to make improvements in terms of the modeling and mapping techniques to better refine the designations that we have for our managed fish species. So in May 2025, after the council completed its review, the council began working on that amendment. And in October, they recently approved this public hearing draft. So this is the next step in the process where we're taking this draft out for public input and comment on the contents of the actions that are proposed for revising these designations. So we'll be holding public hearings, that comment period, as I noted, December, January, and into early February through February 11. And then the comments will be compiled. Any potential revisions can be considered with the committee, the council's committee, and then the council is scheduled to take final action on this amendment in April 2026. So there are two alternatives that are provided for public review. Alternative one is the no-action alternative. So under this alternative, no changes would be made to the current descriptions and designations of essential fish habitat for 14 managed species. So this alternative does not use the most up-to-date scientific information that was available. And many of our designations have not been updated for many, many years. And we know things have changed, the environment has changed, and we have new information available on where these species are found and the different habitat characteristics and environmental information to help inform those designations. So that's the no-action. The action alternative is updates would be made to the essential fish habitat text descriptions and maps for all the fishery management plans using new approaches. So within the amendment, there is a section, Section 6, that includes all of those proposed changes to text and maps. Under this action alternative, this is an administrative update to improve the quality of that scientific information. So for the most part, there are not other environmental effects associated with implementing these new text descriptions. However, that new updated information would inform that essential fish habitat consultation process, and that information would be available to the council as it considers fish habitat conservation for its species. So some of the advantages of the proposed update, alternative to, just modernized information. There are advances that have been made using new data that wasn't previously available. So numerous fishery-independent surveys, particularly in the inshore areas, were gathered and compiled and utilized as part of our process. We also implemented species distribution modeling, which integrated some of those offshore and offshore surveys and new mapping technologies. So Chris Hake, who's been working on the modeling, and Tori Pentner, who's been working on the mapping and information sharing in our applications, are going to be providing a little more detail on that. The new designations also provide for some greater connectivity by providing more complete and connected descriptions between locations, time periods, and species life stages. So our previous designations, most of them relied heavily on the federal survey data with some limited state data, and it was not integrated through a modeling approach. So it looked more like 10-minute square boxes getting turned on, and it was a little bit patchier of a distribution. So the new approaches that we've developed create a more complete map designation, but we've also looked to create more complete text descriptions as well and making sure that all of the life stages are included in those descriptions. So making sure that we've addressed egg, larvae, juvenile, adult life stages completely through our approach. The hope is, in the future, that by doing all this development work, we will streamline our updates. The process will be more standardized and data-driven and mechanistic. So this will hopefully make future five-year reviews more efficient and make it a little more effective to integrate new information into the process when it becomes available. And also, this process really provided for better collaboration. Our essential fish habitat review work was developed not only with the Mid-Atlantic Fishery Management Council in the Mid-Atlantic region, but with the New England Fishery Management Council and with our federal partners and state partners and data providers. So we've worked collaboratively together to develop a better product and also worked to promote consistency in terms of how we're using habitat language and how we structured our designations within the entire Northeast region. So not just for our council, but for our sister council at the New England, in the New England region. So I'm going to hand this off to Chris Hake to touch on the next few slides.
Jessica, you've got an open mic you need to clear.
Okay.
Hey, this is Chris. Am I being heard?
You are.
All right, great. Is the mic issue cleared up?
I'll message her.
I think so.
Okay, cool. Hi, I'm Chris. I've been working on the models for this round of EFH. And I was just going to try and explain a little bit, very briefly, about how they work and what they're doing. So species distribution models, or SDMs, are a way of trying to take the data that we get from fishery-independent surveys or any form of sort of observations of animal densities and to try and make sense of them. So, you know, most of the quantitative data we get on fish habitat utilization comes from sampling that's conducted by fishery-independent surveys, nymphstrals, things like that. But these samples are really only snapshots of what the underlying animal distributions are. You know, they were these discrete points that are very sparsely spaced on the shelf and over time. So to really get a better picture of what the underlying animal distributions are, we have to try and kind of fill in the gaps between those points. And that's where SDMs come into play. They basically try and relate observed patterns of occurrence or abundance in surveys with the environmental conditions at the time and place that an animal was observed. And then over many, many observations, you can start to draw inferences or relationships between the animal abundance and the environment that ideally are sort of representative of physical or ecological requirements of the animals, whether it's their thermal tolerances or their relationships with physical structure or things like that. And so you can use these inferred relationships, species-environment relationships, to estimate a sort of niche response for the species. And then, given a set of known environmental conditions, you can then go out and predict where that species is likely to be. And that's a way of, and you're effectively kind of filling the gaps there between these snapshots in a sort of mechanistic way. So that's what SDMs are doing, and that's what we're trying to do here. So the catch data that we're using comes from 20 years of data from four different bottom trawl surveys with the nymphstrals forming the sort of backbone of the observations. And then three other surveys, the EMAP, the Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts surveys, filling in gaps in the nearshore regions. And altogether, it means about 24,000 observation data points. And then the models are fit to, you know, to distinct life stages when the data is available, which is the case for the majority of species. And those life stages are assigned based on length and maturity data for the species, given their known length data for each individual or for groups of individuals. Next slide, please. And getting a little more into the weeds, but not too far. While the environment is a key driver of species distributions, it is not the only one. Animals don't live in a vacuum. Their distributions are also driven by the distributions of other living organisms and interactions that occur between them. And those sort of biotic interactions, whether it's predators tracking their prey or competitors excluding one another from a location, those can also drive patterns of species abundance and correlations between correlations or covariances in the abundance of different species. And if you don't account for those things, they can sort of make it difficult or cloud species-environment relationships as well. So joint species distribution models are sort of a newer way of trying to deal with that fact. And but in modeling multiple species simultaneously together, joint models try to both estimate correlations or covariances between species, so to identify species, strong inter-species, interdependencies, and explicitly model those interdependencies while at the same time estimating the species-environment relationships that we use to drive the predictions. So and in doing that, you kind of can derive, hopefully, you get more precise estimates of species-environment relationships while also sort of borrowing some, when you have rare species, you can borrow strength across, you can borrow information from kind of other species to estimate things better for the rare species. And hopefully, ultimately, also gain some useful ecological insights in going this route. And I think that's about all I'm going to explain here. People with questions can reach out. And we'll also have a video uploaded in the next day or so with a bit more detail on the modeling framework if people want to visit it.
Thanks, Chris. So Tori is going to do a demo here shortly that's going to talk a little bit about the inshore modeling work that we've, the inshore work we've done. We're calling it the non-modeling pathway, but it integrates some additional state surveys beyond those that were used within the modeling frameworks. So using that survey information with fisheries occurrence data, looking at that information by species and age class, and incorporating that with salinity and depth data to create species estuary zones in those nearshore areas. And we use those zones to really refine our essential fish habitat designations in the nearshore. In the past, with our prior designations, because we didn't have that refined spatial information inshore, if a species was found in an estuary, frequently, just the whole estuary was designated as essential fish habitat. However, we know some of those species aren't found in the freshwater zones. Some of the species are more marine, so they're not found in the mixing zones or polyhaline zones of those estuaries in nearshore areas. So the work that Tori was able to do really has helped refine that. So when we've created the essential fish habitat designations, the mapping approaches, we've essentially combined these two pathways. So we have that modeling pathway that Chris just described, so that's using the species distribution model outputs. And then for most of the modeling-based approaches, we've clipped those. So we have a quantile-based approach where those areas where the species are less likely to be found, which is the purple on the map, is not included in the designation, but the remaining 75% is. And then using the inshore information that Tori is going to touch on a little bit when she pulls up the demo application, combining those two created a single unified essential fish habitat designation map. And this map gets loaded into the NOAA Fisheries Essential Fish Habitat Mapper that's available to project developers, environmental consultants working on projects and federal permiters that are involved in those projects. And that's how that information then becomes accessible through that consultation process. So with that, Tori, are you prepared to pull up the demo app?
Yeah, definitely.
I think this would be a good time to touch on that.
Of course.
And I can stop sharing. So you can go ahead.
Okay, great. So we put together this draft EFH designation app. The idea is basically just a way for all of you to interact with these layers. So there's the URL here. It's a live website, so you can go to this URL. I think maybe Jessica could throw it in the chat for us, just so you have it there, too. And the way it works is you can select by council. So we'll stay in the Mid-Atlantic Council. And all of our EFH designations are in the Select a Species menu. So these are separated by age class, so Atlantic mackerel, adult, Atlantic mackerel, juvenile, larvae and eggs. And then if you look through, you can see we have the layers for all the other species as well. And so I'll just stay on Atlantic mackerel because it's already loaded here. And what you're looking at in blue is the proposed EFH. So that's the action here, so proposed EFH. If you want to look at the previous designation, so that's the current EFH. That's how it is currently. And so you can kind of turn these on and off, go back and forth between the two, see how they're changing, how we've proposed different changes. And just real quick on the sidebar here, just to point out a few things you can look at. So take a tour. We'll run you through the different parts of the app. Layer info, so the top part here is kind of the methodology that we use to create our EFH designation. So if you have questions, you can read through that for more details. And then on the bottom, we define all of the layers in the app. So if you are wondering what exactly a layer means, it's all defined here. Okay, so we select our council, we select our species. Oh, all of the inshore surveys, those are also listed here on the side. And then there's a link to the NERA Data Explorer. So if you want to look deeper into any of these surveys, that's all housed on our Data Explorer. So you can select by species, by survey, different time periods. There's a lot of interesting visualizations there. Let's see. Okay, so as Jessica said, we are combining our inshore occurrences and our models together. So inshore occurrences, we have our estuary species zones. So these are just categorizing each area by salinity and depth. So you have marine shallow, marine mid, polyhaline shallow, polyhaline channel. And so you can see that it's kind of subsets the estuaries into smaller areas. And this kind of helps, as Jessica said, you know, we might see some surveys kind of sparsely throughout the area, but we don't know if this, we're not able to survey everywhere in an estuary. And so this gives us the opportunity to kind of say, if we see a species in some parts that have similar conditions to other parts, let's keep all of that as EFH. So what that looks like, so for example, for Atlantic mackerel, you can see there's some occurrences off the coast of New Jersey, some up in Long Island, up in Maine. And so when we select those estuary zones, those are highlighted in blue here. So those all get included into our EFH designation. And then for models, so like Jessica said, the model quantiles, so we're including the top 75%, so that's blue, green, and yellow. So that gets included with our species estuary zones, and that creates the proposed EFH layer. So it's kind of easy to turn those on and off and see how that works. You'll notice there's a slight, I guess we'll just call it a three-kilometer buffer around the estuary areas. Those, that was just added as like an extra kind of precaution, just to make sure we were being inclusive. I can show one other species here. So let's do scup adult, for example. And it takes a minute for this to load. So if you want to make sure you're on the right species, just look for the name up at the top here. So we go through inshore occurrences again. So we have a lot of occurrences in Long Island Sound, along the coast of New Jersey, going down to Virginia Beach, and even south, further south. So the species estuary zones that get turned on, you can see those here. Our model quantiles in yellow, green, and blue is the top 75%. Combine those together, and you have your proposed EFH. So we have those, like I said, for all these different species. Feel free to look through those. You know, if you have questions, comments, I think that's what we're here for. And again, you can turn the current EFH on and off. That's kind of like a darker blue color and kind of see how things are changing in the new designations. I think that's all. But if there's anything else, feel free to let me know.
Great. Thank you, Tori. So Tori has created a short demo, a video that we have on our YouTube page, and it's also posted online. I know we ran through this relatively quickly, but feel free to open the application, view that video. And then we'll have Chris's modeling video posted as well with more detail on the modeling methods. Also, within the public hearing document, there are two appendices. Appendix A gives the background and methods on all of the previous essential fish habitat designations. And then Appendix B documents all our newer proposed methods in more detail. So if you really want to dig into a lot of detail related to the modeling and those mapping techniques, feel free to dig into those appendices. And as Tori noted, we're happy to answer questions. I'm going to go ahead and reshare my talk here so we can pick up the slides. There we go. Okay, so within the document itself, as it was noted, for many of the species, there are individual maps by life stage. So we have egg or larvae maps or juvenile and adult maps. But for some of the species, it made sense to combine life stages just because of data availability or because of the information that's available. So there are 30-plus maps for our 14 species that are contained within the document. So I'm not going to run through all of those here today, but we'll be happy to answer questions about them individually if you have them. For the text descriptions for essential fish habitat, our approach used the original approach as a foundation, but we included more habitat detail on the spatial distribution of the species, so noting generally where the species is found and then also where it's most likely to be found, providing more information about habitat characteristics or specific associations, substrate types that the species are found, environmental ranges, depth, salinity, and temperature if available, as well as variations in habitat use. So is the species moving seasonally into different geographic areas? Are there aspects of the life history related to? Into different geographic areas or their aspects of the life history related to spawning that we have. Information about. So those are all included. And we utilized information from the literature, from the survey information that was available from the maps that were provided, as well as consultation with. Fish habitat experts that were on our essential fish habitat action teams and plan development teams that we utilized during the essential fish habitat reveal. So for those text descriptions, we generally tried to have a structure to them. Where we touched on the life stage, we were talking about the size break, you know, how we defined a juvenile versus an adult. Again, touching on those temperature and salinity. Ranges here, if the temperature drops below a certain temperature. We also noted things like habitat types. That may be used frequently by the species or if there are habitat types that are not generally used. We also highlighted those as well. If there were differences in habitat used by size. And then getting into the detail of those preferred substrate types. And other details relative to, you know, geographic range and depth that you might commonly find in species. So all of those text descriptions are available. Within the document and we tried to put them side by side with the previous designation and the current designation for comparison. So we've also highlighted some habitat areas of particular concern within the action. Again, those are that subset of essential fish habitat that are ecologically important, sensitive to human induced environmental degradation, stressed by development activities are rare. So the current habitat areas of particular concern that are designated by the council. That are currently in place includes golden tile fish juveniles and adults. And that habitat type was clay, playbo outcroppings. In four specific canyons, Norfolk, Vich, Lydonia, Oceanographer, between 100 and 300 meter depth. So that was a specific habitat type tile fish. Typically use vertical burrows, but in these canyons, they create horizontal burrows into these clay outcroppings. In addition, for summer flounder, juvenile and adults, submerged aquatic vegetation was also a habitat area of particular concern that our council had previously designated. Within the proposed action. There are several other proposed habitat areas of particular concern and. Along with all the other information in this document, our council seeking public input on these, these focused on a couple of different areas. Climate vulnerability to habitat types. Several of these focused on the concentrations of species where large numbers of those species are found. And then we included some habitat areas of particular concern that are related to dynamic oceanography. So for bluefish, summer flounder, stuff, black sea bass. And surf clam, there are proposed designations. That identified species life stages that were moderately to highly dependent on a specific habitat. And habitat types that were high to verily, very high. Had, had hide a very high habitat climate vulnerability. So NOAA Fisheries had conducted. Habitat climate vulnerability assessment. So how vulnerable submerged aquatic vegetation or marsh? You know, different habitat types are to climate pressures. So that's how those were identified. In the case of long fin squid. We looked at. The quantiles of outputs from the models. So the 25th quantile, which would be the highest concentration of that species. As a hotspot within that occupied habitat. So that was put forward as a potential. Habitat area of particular concern because these concentrated areas could be considered ecologically important. Again, looking for comment and input on that. For ocean cohog, the cold pole in the mid Atlantic bite. Which is a whole area of water. That has also been identified as a habitat area of particular concern that's proposed in the document. And ocean cohogs are also sensitive to ocean acidification. So that was noted. As part of the habitat area of particular concern and blue line tile fish. Anecdotally, some fishermen have indicated that the northern side of Hudson Canyon is an area of higher catch rates. So that was noted that even though we don't have a lot of information on that right now, that may be habitat area with important. Yeah, not well understood ecological importance. So that's something also that the council would be seeking input on. So all of these HAPCs are, they're just proposed. I think these are things that the council would really welcome additional input on. These approaches, because these are slightly different approaches than we've taken in the past. To identifying habitat areas of particular concern as a subset of essential fish habitat. Now, within the document as well, the council did take a look at. The impacts of fishing on these proposed essential fish habitat designations. They looked at the current gear prohibitions that are in place, the recent changes in the mid Atlantic fleet and some model based outputs of fishing effect. So there's a whole section dedicated to the fishing effects on the proposed EFH. And the council at this time determined that there's really no additional measures that are needed to address adverse effects. On these proposed EFH areas at this time. So that's something the council, I think, would also welcome comment on as well. So as I said, we welcome your input. There's a number of ways that you can comment. The comment period is going to be open till February 11. In addition to providing any public testament testimony tonight. You are welcome to submit written comments. You can submit those via email. There's also a public comment portal on our website. You can upload documents to that portal as well. So you can type out a short comment or you can upload a document. Or a map or something that you think might be helpful as part of your comment. And you can also send us comments through regular snail mail. The council is going to consider all of your input and consider taking final action in April of 2026. And to find the hearing schedule, if you'd like to attend another hearing, any of the documents or the ways to submit the comments. Just go to the council webpage under actions. You can look up the omnibus essential fish habitat amendment. And there are specific details and links to help you submit your comments. With that, Michelle, I'm going to hand it back to you.